Good afternoon, everybody. We're going to go ahead and get started. It's five o'clock exactly. As a kind reminder, tonight's event is being recorded. The recording will be available for playback on the NBC Palm Springs Digital Network through the election. Audience video will be turned off and audio muted during the event to protect the integrity of the digital screen, the stream. Good evening and thank you for joining us tonight. As a service to our community, the Cathedral City Chamber of Commerce, in partnership with the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce, is proud to host tonight's Cathedral City City Council Candidate Forum. My name is Rebecca Rizzo. I am Director of Membership for the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce and will be the emcee for tonight. The candidate's speaking order for tonight's event was determined by alphabetical order of last name, as all our candidate forums will be done this year. We have allotted each candidate three minutes to make an opening remark. Candidates, when it's your turn, please state your name, followed by your three-minute introductory statement. We have Diana Soto, who signs showing how much time is left. Please respect the time limits. In addition to the time restrictions, we have kindly asked the candidates to refrain from disparaging or engaging with the fellow candidates. A reminder, this forum, this is a forum, not a debate. Please limit your discussion to your individual plans and perspectives on the city of Cathedral City. Let's begin with our first candidate. Again, you have three minutes. We would like to welcome candidate Alan Carvalho. Carvalho, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. My name is Alan Carvalho. I'm a candidate in Cathedral City for District One for City Council. Again, thank you very much for having this forum. I'm seeking your vote in order to bring back a progressive voice on the City Council that will respect and honor our diverse cultural community. We must have an outspoken voice to block efforts on the City Council to remove symbols of pride for our Latinx veterans and LGBTQ communities. Patriot Park that honors our veterans should not be desecrated by being turned into a dog park. Excuse me. Our ambulance service should not be contracted out to AMR. Our seniors and families deserve a new community center and our children, a public pool during the summer. I've been actively involved in the advancement of Cathedral City's art and entertainment district with the new casino, the rehabilitation of the Mary Pickford Theater, the CB Rep Playhouse, and the new community amphitheater. I helped in the diversification of the economy with the addition of the cannabis industry, which has allowed the city to hire additional police, fire, and ambulance service. Your vote means the city will complete the Ophelia Bringus Memorial Bridge on Cathedral Canyon Drive. Short-term vacation rentals will be allowed with strong enforcement. Educational facilities, COD Auto Tech Center, the recreational opportunities for our families will be realized. I cannot stress enough the importance of a district council member throughout the whole city remaining silent when residents are requesting their voice to be heard. If you send me an email, call me, text me, or see me on the street, I will not ignore you. I will answer your concerns immediately. And if I don't have the answers, I'll find out what they might be. I thank you all for this opportunity to speak this afternoon and remind everyone, please fill out your ballots and either mail them immediately or drop them off at designated ballot boxes throughout our valley. I also want to remind everybody that when filling out your ballots, it's crucial that you sign the back of the envelope and date it. If you do not, then unfortunately, your ballot will not be counted. My name is Alan Carvalho and I'm your candidate for City Council in District One. Thank you again, Chamber of Commerce and other candidates.
Thank you. We would like to welcome candidate JR Corrales. The floor is yours.
Good afternoon. Thank you for joining me today. My name is Jared Corrales and I'm running for City Council in District Two. I am a lifelong resident of this beautiful city. I'm married to an amazing wife with three beautiful children. I decided to run because I have passion and love for our city. I feel the city needs to continue in the right direction. I believe our city is a gem in the desert. As a representative of my district and the city, I'd like to set a percentage of our city budget dedicated to our infrastructure. Our roads need our attention, we need your support, and back our first responders. It's time to put Cathedral City first. We need to add diversity to the already amazing City Council. We are a unique city with many walks of life. It's time for the City Council to...
Let's give him a second.
Part of the change in the city long before I took part in my neighborhood. I want to make a city a priority. It's time to take care of our city and give it the love it deserves. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We would like to welcome Councilmember Rita Lamb. The floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you. Thank you, Rebecca. I am Cathedral City Councilwoman Rita Lamb and I'm running for reelection in District One. Since taking office last September following a special election, I voted to protect our fire and police departments. I voted for short-term rental policies that have something for everyone, including the vacation industry, while restoring our neighborhoods and protecting the quality of life for our residents. I voted for infrastructure projects that benefit residents and businesses like the Ophelia Bringus Memorial Bridge at Cathedral Canyon and voted for budget adjustments that reflect the new economic reality. By far, the most critical issue facing our community, state, nation, and the world is COVID-19. It's a health crisis unlike anything I've experienced in my lifetime. The most important consideration is helping our residents stay safe and slow the spread of the virus. The city's communication efforts are vigorous and include public service announcements from the mayor, my colleagues on council, staff, and volunteers, from how to make your own mask to how to access available county, state, federal resources. I just finished reading the book, "The Dot," for Coronavirus Storytime, and that is a global initiative to support our community of young readers. The resulting economic impact profoundly affects individuals, families, and businesses, big and small. Some businesses have closed and won't come back, like Zobun Meester's Restaurant right around the corner. A shout-out to our amazing city staff who are steadfast, consistent, and aggressive in pursuing state and federal grant opportunities that bring much-needed funds to our city. The engineering department secured SB2 funding that included the purchase of two touchscreen plan review tables to better expedite building drafts and the resubmission of the Dream Home Parks Project Round Number Four. Only 62 of the 478 applications reviewed in Round Three were authorized, and our staff is up to bat once again. As a council and city, we're working overtime to rethink how we provide the essential services. Following the murder of George Floyd, Police Chief Crum has initiated a review of the police department's strategic plan and examining in-depth the calls for service the department receives and which ones might better be handled by non-sworn personnel. As a leader in promoting a culture of nondiscrimination, Cathedral City adopted prohibitions against arbitrary discrimination in our city's early history and promotes events celebrating our diversity and inclusiveness, including LGBT Days, Taste of Alisco, and one of my favorites, the Tohono Music Festival. I'm honored to have the full support of our mayor and colleagues on council. I've demonstrated a willingness to collaborate and work towards solutions with sincerity and substance. I would be honored to receive your vote. Stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you. We would like to welcome candidate Nancy Ross. The floor is yours.
Nancy, you need to unmute.
Unmuting. Sorry, I thought you guys were unmuting. Good afternoon. I am Nancy Ross, and I'd like to start with a big old thank you to the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce for hosting this forum. Never has there been a year in which this format is more important. With our constituents not able to see us in their clubhouses, parks, and neighborhoods, this opportunity is invaluable. I really appreciate the time you spent putting this together. I have been endorsed by both the Cathedral City Fire Department and the Cathedral City Police Department. I live in Cathedral City, District Two. I'm running for City Council and I'm participating in this forum to give you a chance to get to know me a little better and hopefully earn your vote. For more than 30 years, I have served in the public sector, first as a Little League coach and a PT paid president, and then on the Citizens Advisory Committee for my school district. I've been a civil rights activist and I've spoken at conventions and symposiums around the nation regarding the rights of others, including criminal justice reform, immigration reform, LGBTQ rights, and civil rights, culminating with an invitation to speak at the White House in 2001. I was elected and served for six years on the Board of Directors of the ACLU, and those experiences have taught me how to collaborate, how to use inclusion as a tool to advance ideas, and how to make hard decisions. Experience matters, and perhaps no time more than now. In Cathedral City, 80% of our budget is personnel, so every cut hurts our city. The pandemic brings reduced tax revenues, shuttered businesses, food insecurity, unemployment at record levels, and sometimes hopelessness. Along with my fellow council members, I will help navigate us through these difficult times. It won't be easy, but what valuable work ever is. We must address the effects of COVID-19 head-on while not allowing it to define our future. As a business owner and entrepreneur, I will bring leadership experience and vision to help guide us forward. I want to continue to serve Cathedral City utilizing my knowledge, skills, and personal understanding of both the people of the city and how local government can work to enhance the quality of life for all citizens. For more than three years, I have attended every meeting of the City Council, their study sessions, and even their annual goal-setting retreats. I've been to every planning, parks, and events, and Public Arts Commission meeting, where I have also served as a commissioner. I sit on both the city's cannabis and homeless task forces, Manny Perez's Green Ribbon Commission on homelessness, and have participated with Lift to Rise on affordable housing. I've attended more than 250 city meetings where I've listened to what our citizens have said and have learned what they care deeply about. It is with this information and solid understanding of what the job entails, I ask you today for your vote. Again, because experience matters, and it will show when I serve the people of District Two and all of Cathedral City. Come join me at nancy@nancforcathedralcity.com and I'll write you back.
Thank you. We appreciate your opening remarks. We would now like to move into the Q and A portion of tonight's events. All the questions...
Rebecca, you skipped a candidate. JR needs to go.
No, Dylan.
No.
Were they all include JR? Did you get yours? Okay, that's right. You know what? I apologize, the mic cut off. That's what it was. Okay, thank you.
Okay. We appreciate your opening remarks. We would now like to start the questions posed at the forum. These questions were supplied by the Cathedral City Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors in consultation with the chamber's Business Legislation Advocacy Committee. The questions were given to all the candidates in advance. We do this purposefully as our attempt is not to perform a knowledge test, but rather to try and determine how each candidate would govern should they be elected. We feel this is best accomplished by allowing them to state exactly where they stand on issues. The speaking order will be progressive, meaning if you answered last to the question, you will answer first to the next question. You have two minutes to address each question. For our first question of the night, let's get right into COVID. This has obviously caused a disruption in tax revenue for all local governments, city, and county. And the current emergency measures that have local businesses shuttered continues into next year. We could start to see very serious budget disruption at all levels of government. Tell us about some of the steps you would be prepared to take to protect Cathedral City's essential government services. What kind of governance should residents expect from you if faced with budget shortfalls? Candidate Ross, you spoke last during introductions. You are first to address this question.
I'm not even muted. The blueprint for our economic recovery requires following health and safety measures that will allow our city to move from the California positive rating considered substantial to moderate and then minimal, allowing our city to fully reopen. This will only be achieved if we continue to take our health and the health of those around us seriously. Continuing to wear face coverings, washing hands, and social distancing is proven to help. We must advocate for state and national aid for our struggling families and businesses. But as impactful as this has been on our economy, with our businesses only making a small fraction of their past profits, our citizens struggling to make ends meet and suffering food insecurity, it will be devastating if we open too quickly and are forced to fall back. Our city has been forward-thinking over the last several years to gain a budget reserve, and some of those funds have been used to save public safety jobs a few months ago. And I will support using additional funds to continue preserving those positions. We do not have an abundance of police and fire employees. We have the minimum we need, and to lose even one or two will be impactful to the safety of our city. Our revenue reserves that we worked to establish for times just like this, and we should not be afraid to use it. Cathedral City's Economic Development Director, Stone James, has been working on a variety of social and governmental programs we have been taking advantage of to assist our citizens, businesses, and the government alike. We should and will continue to work with him to make sure we can stay on top of any new resources coming down the pipeline and take advantage again of all the opportunities allowed during these trying times. If elected, I promise to work tirelessly on aiding all the citizens and businesses in need to get us through as best as possible this global pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Carvalho?
Thank you. Am I... Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. First of all, COVID is a serious concern for our city, and I'm grateful that our mayor took initiative to create a citywide ordinance that requires the masks and social distancing. It's really important that we follow this. Otherwise, we're going to be in trouble to have to repeat these things over and over. Fortunately, the previous city council, having approved a successful cannabis industry in our city with strict regulations and enforcement through code enforcement, the city threw the new revenue stream from this industry, that same city council from 2014 to 2018, put aside a rainy day fund, a cash reserve of $21 million, which has since been utilized to support our first responders. Our police and fire departments, the fire department, including our much-respected ambulance service, has retained their required employment through the actions of the council. $5 million of the cash reserve mentioned earlier have been used to preserve our public safety officers. I would secure further funding through our annual tax sources that a percentage of the fiscal budget preserve the cash reserve for future emergencies. The beauty of the 2014-2018 is that they never got to see or use that financial gain, but we now are using it, and that was their legacy. I want to see this council also leave a legacy for future councils. The staff and the city manager have scrutinized every possible budget cut possible without compromising in public health and safety, and I continue that mission going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. JR Corrales?
Just wanted to make sure we can hear me. COVID has impacted many of our lives moving forward. As a small business owner here, it impacted me directly. So dealing with that has been a very serious problem that I feel we're getting close to the resolution of being able to move forward with this unfortunate pandemic. I feel our city council did an amazing job by leading the forefront as far as being the first city in the valley to require face masks as a preventative measure. And I feel with the guidance of the CDC and listening to our national leaders and scientists, it's a wonderful way... Now, moving forward, it's important that we love to be with our city council, our current council, to make sure that there is some sort of backup plan just in case something like this were to happen again, hopefully not. I feel like with our short staff and our small staff in Cathedral City, cross-training is going to be very important. It's important for us as a council and our city employees to be cross-trained in multiple jobs to, God forbid, something like this happen. It's also important that we listen to our scientists and our doctors and the CDC to ensure that we're doing the best thing possible to move forward with this. I am a city council member and I am not a scientist, and I don't believe I have the best resolution. But following the guidance of the CDC and listening to our leaders is a very important situation, and it's important that we, as a city, back those up. Thank you.
Thank you. Rita Lamb?
How's that? Is that okay? Can you hear me? Great, thank you. On June 22nd, the City Council met in a special session to review the potential budget impacts associated with the immediate loss of revenue due to COVID-19 and approved, proposed budget adjustments. This was the culmination of an exhaustive review of every department's expenditures and an evaluation of every line item. The cost-saving measures that we did on that day, one, we froze all personnel vacancies and recruiting actions. Two, freezing all operations deemed nonessential, realignment of city services, and the use of reserve funds that has been mentioned. No one knows the full impact of the pandemic, but some of the ways our city is assisting residents and businesses. Assistance at the Cathedral City Senior Center, serving and ensuring that support services are given to our most vulnerable, including the Fine Food Bank. The City Council increased funding for the senior center also. Aggressively working with restaurants and vulnerable populations with the Great Plates Food Delivery Program, and Stone James was mentioned, and he was pivotal making sure that was a success and be able to come in, and it was a win-win for restaurants and seniors. Working with Lift to Rise, the rent relief programs, and the next one is coming up actually at Agro Caliente Elementary School, and that's, I believe it's, the date is October 14th, it's on a Saturday, to make it available for working folks to find out how they can apply for rent assistance. Marketing campaign to communicate the seriousness of COVID-19 to our community. Our community has been hit with this, and you know, we experienced lots of incidences of COVID-19. So as it's been stated, having that protective measure and having that knowledge and having the city communicate this with those emergency measures has made a big difference. Possible funding assistance through CARES for restaurants that can create an outdoor experience, and that we were just talking about at the last city council meeting. Is the council's responsibility to monitor this new fiscal reality and make decisions with substance and sincerity and protect our vital services that the residents deserve. Votes on protecting our vital services are consistent with my policies, and I enjoy the endorsement of the Cathedral City Fire Department and the Cathedral City Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question. Cathedral City is moving to phase out short-term vacation rentals in areas not governed by HOAs. Do you support this action? Please explain. Rita Lamb, you're up first.
Okay. I support the phase-out of short-term vacation rentals. A year of exhaustive study has resulted in recommendations and a final solution that is something for everyone. It was a unanimous vote of the council. It was determined that STVRs are incompatible with residential neighborhoods and quality of life issues for our residents. We're at the heart of this. Cathedral City is home to nine public schools with enrollment at approximately 8,000. There are five elementary schools, two middle schools, Cathedral City High School, and Mount San Jacinto Continuation High School. To put it another way, one out of every seven residents is school age. This number does not reflect infants, toddlers, and preschoolers and the young adults that attend College of the Desert, Cal State San Bernardino Palm Desert, UC Riverside Palm Desert, or the variety of private trade and technical schools. Our community has 21,000 households and 1,000-plus businesses. The median household income is $46,000. The median age is just 38. Palm Springs, the median age is 54, and Rancho Mirage at 64. Our community is young, vital, and invested in our city, its future and each other. On July 29th, at a special session of the City Council, council-directed staff to move forward with plans to phase out short-term rentals. This phase-out is over two years. Short-term vacation rentals will be permitted in developments with HOAs that allow them, home sharing will continue. Restoring our neighborhoods and preserving the quality of life for our residents is the key issue. I applaud our city manager for creating a structure and timeline that allowed for all concerned parties to have a voice in this process, beginning with the formation of an STVR task force comprised of residents, hospitality industry experts, and real estate professionals, and City Council liaison, Mayor John Aguilar. Community forums held at Cathedral City Library and City Hall chambers where residents and industry professionals could share their specific concerns and experiences, and the creation, tabulation, and presentation of a survey summarizing community feedback, public comments at almost every council meeting, and a special council session devoted to a final analysis of the findings. My vote to phase out short-term vacation rentals was and is a referendum on my values. My home is my haven where I can restore my energies, rest, regroup, and frolic with family and friends. The pressure to step up to the plate and make difficult decisions is the privilege of public service. Thank you.
Nancy Ross? Same question.
Sorry, it was a two-step unmute. You got me. You got me again. Yes, yes, I do support the council's decision. I think each and every one of our elected officials on city council members and the city council, the members of the city council, they work diligently with the task force of industry representatives and residents of our city to come up with a compromise solution to the problems caused by short-term vacation rentals, also known as STVRs. I have closely followed that debate, both in chambers at every meeting, where I have listened to the position of city council members and hundreds of citizens. I've been at a neighborhood meeting at City Hall, listening to residents, STVR owners and supporters, as well as in one-on-one meetings with people positioned on either side of the issue. Additionally, I've read significant amounts of documentation presented by both parties. I am fully convinced that our council made an informed and balanced decision to support STVRs in resort areas like Desert Princess or Canyon Shores while limiting them in our residential neighborhoods. Remember, residents anywhere, including residential neighborhoods, can still home share. That means they can rent out a spare room to visitors. Although I am convinced that the owners of the STVRs do not want to be bad neighbors or to cause trouble for the city, the very situation of random people who are not personally known by either the property owners or the neighbors in unsupervised areas bring with it problems that are definitely predictable. The council has encouraged investors to buy in HOA communities that support their rental businesses. And additionally, I would support STVR owners meeting with developers and looking into the feasibility of building an entire HOA community for the purpose of STVR investment in appropriate zones. This would allow each STVR owner to have both a personal property to enjoy and rent while being able to share aggregate services such as management, housekeepers, pool cleaners, and yard maintenance, perhaps actually reducing their overall costs. I stand with the current council and their vote on STVRs. And if elected to be your council member, I will support the safe and quiet enjoyment of homes by resident families and the growth of STVRs in appropriate zones. And I thank you for allowing me to share my position on this hot topic.
Thank you. Alan Carvalho?
Thank you. Can you hear me? Thank you. First of all, I am in favor of short-term vacation rentals, and I will tell you why. As mentioned before, the cannabis industry was challenged by a city council not in support of medical marijuana. I and former council member Shelley Kaplan, who I've been involved with for 48 years, introduced the option to bring a referendum to bring the cannabis industry to the voters. Once council members were aware of the economic advantages brought to their attention through the cannabis task force, they reversed their reluctance and have since seen a phenomenal growing industry respected throughout the valley because the previous council hired the same lawyers that were responsible for the successful cannabis industry in Denver, Colorado. My hope is that with the proper guidance from the same experts used to assist Palm Springs in their developing a successful, effective, strictly enforced, and I might add, significant fines and a third party hired to create a user-friendly and resident-sensitive business plan, which could result in our city council reversing their abrupt decision to phase out short-term vacation rentals. A respected STVR task force was formed to help councils decide how to best handle this newfound industry that brought in at least last year $600,000 in revenue. That same task force voted seven to six in favor of an STVR ordinance providing the proper laws, fees, and fines to move this process forward. After the staff recommended that the STVRs be allowed in City Council with strict enforcement, the City Council sadly ignored the task force, And the hundreds of combined hours these dedicated community volunteers put into their research and voted instead to phase out the STVRs. After putting together a 750-page review of how to best handle the vacation rental issue, and after that same task force voted in favor of vacation rentals, they still said no. I'm aware of a group who are interested in bringing this to the ballot for the residents to decide the fate of STVRs. The serious threat of lawsuits and the millions from our industry experts and residents upset with this drastic decision, I'm concerned that that will turn the ordinance around and offer an equitable solution to safe, secure and again strictly enforced legislation to introduce a new breed of STVRs. If the success of Palm Springs, which has reversed the pattern of upset residents and violations of noise ordinances can be duplicated here in Cathedral City, I'm confident that the same conservative council can see the light and agree with the task force they requested. I really believe that with the majority of our city residents are in favor of options for property owners to provide private home rentals to those who prefer homes over hotels. I feel that this council attempted to take the easy road and not allow for proper restrictions and significant fines that would have resulted in the same position experienced at Palm Springs as witnessed. I know from personal experiences taking care of a friend's vacation rental in Palm Springs that the residents were required to fill out a contract stating that under no circumstances were they allowed to outdoor music at any time of the day, no loud partying, indoor or out, day or night, while they were staying in the home. Also, any fines levied against such violations would be directed at the guests. And not the...
Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, JR Corrales, let's try this again. You're up.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Just want to make sure. I stood connections. Thank you. And as our city faces a huge change in direction, short-term rentals have become a very serious topic here in our town. I believe our city council made the right decision in listening to the majority of its residents as far as the short-term rental goes. I support the decision that they made. The city in large wanted it to happen and the council did what was right. Moving forward, I do believe that there is a chance for us to reopen the discussion. And like Alan said, for our citizens to be able to vote on it as a whole. I've even thought of the idea of maybe even making it a separate district issue where every council, every person in their district can vote to see what the city wants. And at the end of the day, that's why Cathedral City made this city into districts, to give voice to every single citizen in the city, not just to certain individuals here and there. I do believe moving forward, it'd be great to have an open discussion to discuss the issue. Unfortunately, I believe now the city council made the right decision in taking care of it, not to say that it's a closed door forever. I do believe that with the proper discussion and right analytics, the discussion can be made up there. And I duly, I truly believe that every district should be able to vote on its own to decide if they want to have short-term vacation rentals. But as far as the whole, I agree with city council for the time being as far as their decision to short, to phase those out.
Thank you. Next question. With the addition of the new amphitheater and casino, the downtown Highway 111 corridor continues to take shape. A development effort many years in the making. Is Cathedral City headed in the right direction when it comes to development and commercial growth? Are there areas for improvement or acceleration? JR Corrales, you're up.
As a lifelong resident of our beautiful city, I am so excited to have the amphitheater and the casino go up because it opens up the door wide, the door wide open for the further development of our beautiful city. A lot of times we drive through downtown Cathedral City to get to other cities. And I feel that this amphitheater and this casino is going to provide great opportunity for a downtown resurgence of our city that will bring more jobs and more business into our downtown area. I feel that's a great opportunity to take the bull by the reins now and make sure that we are able to accommodate the casino and the amphitheater by providing surrounding businesses to support it and to help the city thrive as a whole. I believe our downtown area is becoming a beautiful place and I stand with it again that it is a gem in our desert. And Cathedral City is moving forward at an amazing pace. And the economic development that will help by the casino and the amphitheater is going to improve our city budget as a whole, which will give us opportunity to hire more staff as far as code enforcement and other things that the city requires. It's a great opportunity and I'm happy to be a part of it soon.
Thank you. Rita Lamb?
I'm gonna say the short, the short answer is yes, is Cathedral City headed in the right direction. The addition of the amphitheater and the new Agua Caliente Casino are game changers for Cathedral City. Before COVID, we showcased our new amphitheater by holding our annual Taste of Jalisco Community Event. It was amazing, will prove to be a precious community resource for years to come. The CV Repertory Theater, another Cathedral City gem, is partnering with the city to use the amphitheater to showcase a series of performances newly designed to be performed in outside venue. And this is all continued, conditional on safety factors and state guidelines related to COVID-19. The amphitheater is designed for a maximum of 2,900 and the CV indoor theater holds 225. So social distancing and the protocols will make this a perfect match if all other health measures are met. And this idea was brought before the Parks and Community Events Committee by Ron Solona, the artistic director of the CV Repertory Theater. In the short term, the pop-up drive-in theater is planned for the acreage across from the Civic Center. We're all awaiting that. And in the long term, developers are interested in the property across from the casino for a multi-use project, including eateries, residential and a hotel. There is interest in the building vacated by the Burlington Coat Factory. We already have a new beautiful 7-Eleven, quick crack car wash, a new tower market in the works. Schottenkirk Desert Lexus just completed its new showroom on Highway 111. And right behind is the new location for the COD Auto Technology Training Facility. The housing market is robust and there are new residential homes being constructed by GHA District East, I think there's only one left, GHA Cathedral City 25, DR Horton Verano New Home Community and Mountain View Estates off DePom and near Rio Vista, as well as smaller projects and parcels throughout the city. So yes, the short answer again, of course, it's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Ross?
I'm a trying. Hey there, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
I agree with Rita. Yes, yes, yes. With the casino, the amphitheater and the CV rep, we have a triangle of anchor businesses, just like a mall who brings in the one big business and then great businesses come in all around it. This will bring quality buildings to the downtown area that we have not seen before. It's important that we establish some criteria for what it is we're going to be looking for in terms of aesthetics and design through our entire 111 district. Once we've developed a vision for the 111 corridor and how to make it cohesive with the anchor properties, we should, along with economic development, look at businesses and services that will best meet the needs of our citizens. Then continuing on and working to encourage building on the vacant lands that sat for way too long, we can build the downtown part of our city, the kind we envision. As for the existing businesses that are also along the corridor, I believe with the improved looks and value that they're going to find increasing in the area, you're going to see storefronts improved and landscaping used to highlight each business, also following a set vision we have for the area. And in better times, I know it's hard to think of them, but they will come. We may even consider offering low-interest storefront improvement grants that will bring that theme and vision forward. I really believe that this area of Cathedral City is on an upward trajectory, maybe one of the few happy things going on right now. And I'm really happy to be here to celebrate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Carvalho?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
First of all, I agree with Rita. I agree with Nancy and JR. It's not a debate. I think we all have such strong passions for our city. And it's a dream come true initiated by the previous administration that funded the amphitheater, that worked with the, with the tribe to move the casino forward. I'm proud to have been on the Public Arts Commission for six years, having been the chair for the past five. We were instrumental in supporting art, music and the community events that brought thousands of families into our downtown to enjoy our annual balloon festival, our Taste of Jalisco honoring our sister city and tequila Jalisco, Mexico. The variety and excitement of our cultural diversity draws crowds to our downtown. Having created strong ties with the general manager Ted Hain of the Mary Pickford Theater and the executive director Ron Solona of the CB Rep Theater, through my chairmanship on public arts, I pride myself in working collaboratively, promoting our city through the arts sculptures and murals that we brought to the city. Also, the commission gained the council's support when they increased our percentage of funding for live art and art shows, which engaged students from the high school local dance troupes and helped fund the annual data awards, which are presented annually at the Mary Pickford. This gave students an opportunity to see their film projects, their graphic arts work and their animation skills honored with an award ceremony where their projects were viewed on the large movie screens with their families and their friends to enjoy. These events, together with the commissioners of the sculpture, of the sculpture honoring Lalo Guerrero, celebrating the city's 35th anniversary, as well as a sculpture honoring fallen heroes on our police force, the outdoor gallery of sculptures in the City Hall Paseo, as well as sculptures throughout. I'm proud to have been part of it and I move it forward. And I'm just so thrilled that we're all in agreement that downtown is going to flourish and become the ideal big, the place that people will come to, to visit. And it's going to be a phenomenal place. Thank you.
Thank you. We have increasingly seen city councils across the nation play active roles in the national conversation about social justice. Whether it is community policing, affordable housing or addressing the needs of youth. As a community, how is Cathedral City faring when it comes to equality, supporting the needs of the residents? Equitably, supporting the needs of the residents. Alan, you're up first.
Thank you. First of all, I think the city council is doing an incredibly great job in protecting the rights of all people. So I am encouraged by that and I'm thrilled about it. Before I turned out from the Public Arts Commission in June, I contacted Mayor Aguilar and was supported with an art project proposed to create a Black Lives Matters mural at the outdoor amphitheater. Since that would have been my last meeting to make such a proposal as chair, the council members instead decided to shelf that project until the new commissioners were appointed. Sadly, that proposal was never implemented. And I fear for political reasons, our community's support will never fully be realized. That I had hoped would have been a legacy project for our city and our Mayor Aguilar. I'm thrilled that our chief of police has been very supportive and he's extremely, he has really reached out for Black Lives Matters. And I'm really proud because so many communities misunderstand the value. Black Lives Matters doesn't mean that all lives don't matter. It's just that right now, that community is hurting horrendously. So I think that it's important that black lives do matter. Thank you.
Thank you. JR Corrales?
In regards to our social justice as a responsibility as a city council, I do feel it is very important as a local community to get involvement. And the only way to take care of our national issues is to bridge the gap between ours first responders and our community. It's the only way that we're going to get an understanding for each other as a whole, to be able to listen to the concerns and also to know that our first responders are our true heroes. As this topic is very hot nationwide, I feel as a city, we need to take care of it within ourselves to ensure that we take care of our city first. I feel our first responders play a huge phenomenal role in our city and keeping it safe. And I feel that within the community, it's our job to make sure that we bridge that gap of communication between the two. So that way, our overall improvement with our relationship with our first responders becomes out of a positive note and not a negative note. As far as our youth is concerned, I feel very strongly about bringing on our desert recreation centers to our city as a whole to generate more activities for our youth to be able to be a part of. As of now, we don't have any community center. We're the only city other than Indian Wells that isn't a part of it. Our youth is in dear need of it and it's time to stand up and bridge the gap. Our average families are 38 years old with about one and a half children per in our city. And it's time to pay attention to that. And it's time to focus in with our city ourselves so that we can be in the forefront nationally. And so I do believe that taking care of our first responders and bridging the gap between us and our first responders is a very important role in order to make everything better.
Thank you. Rita Lamb?
Thank you. And I focused my answers on the three areas that you included in the question, the community policing, affordable housing and addressing the needs of the youth. Our mission is to create a safe, inclusive and progressive community. The Cathedral City Police Department is committed to protecting and serving the life, property and rights of all people in our city and has been a leader in promoting a culture of non-discrimination. Police Chief Crom and the department continually review operations to improve capabilities and enhance public trust. That include a strategic plan update to examine the calls for service and determine which ones require a response by a police officer and which might be better handled by non-sworn personnel and the formation of a police advisory council. Affordable housing. Cathedral City actively and aggressively participates in county and state programs designed to provide funding to all local governments in California that specifically help cities implement plans to increase the affordable housing stock. The permanent local housing allocation, which is called PLHA program, was designed to provide a permanent source of funding to all local governments. Current local projects include the upgrade and remodel of residences at Cathedral Pond Senior Living. That's on Landau and includes a brand-new community room. Phase one is already underway and the grant funding was just approved this summer. Veterans housing on just a housing project south of the new Salvation Army Center on Landau and redoing the housing element in the general plan to reflect future needs and the needs of youth. I represent the city on the two-by-two committee for Palm Springs Unified School District. They recognized the role of technology for students and started five years ago to address technology needs and the digital divide. As a result of COVID-19, March 7th, students were in school. March 19th, emergency stay-at-home order and the world changed. And that involved teacher training. All students had devices and district added hotspots for connectivity, connectivity. In addition, the Boys and Girls Club continues to provide much-needed support to local area children with Zoom after school. The city provides funding through the Community Development Block Grant and the community supports projects through fundlight raisers, like the virtual meatball festival. The city partnered with the Palm Springs Unified School District and the Desert Recreation to offer swimming classes at the pool at Cathedral City High School for the summer months and covered the cost of those classes. But this was all put on hold due to the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Ross?
Hello again. We are a city of diversity, both economically and culturally. And we have seen across the nation that this combination can be viewed negatively. But I see it as an asset. It is imperative that we find ways to move the conversations and actions forward regarding topics such as systematic racism, voter suppression, criminal justice reform, immigration reform and poverty. And I will sponsor techniques for building valuable coalitions and with collaboration by evaluating concerns and working towards solutions. And those, these seem like national issues that could not be relevant to our community. I would beg to differ. These issues and feelings associated have trickled down and the inability to see them within our own community will only allow them to fester and grow. Though we cannot change federal or state law, we can change opinions. And I believe it is the responsibility of the smallest of governments to plant the seeds of change where they can grow. Cathedral City offers our residents 1,153 affordable housing units. And with the inclusion of the Cathedral Palms Project and for seniors and the Veterans Village, both mentioned by Rita, we will expand that to 1,497 units. We have a great police department who by choice does not use chokeholds, who has implemented de-escalation technique training, race relation reviews and wears body cameras. It just goes to show that we are a community who hold our police to a higher standard and they're willing to meet that challenge. I do not support... I do not support the notion of defunding the safety services in Cathedral City. If you were to get sick here and need a paramedic services, you will find none better in the valley. Our firefighters are cross trained and your chances of survival here are as good as you can find anywhere. For our kids and family, unfortunately, due to COVID, we can't move forward with a bond measure to provide our children with desert wrecked swimming pool or recreation center, at least not until the pandemic is is passed and families are stronger on their financial feet. But for now, we have hiking trails, biking on the Seabee Link and parks throughout the city that offer a skate park, basketball courts, softball, soccer, and baseball fields, tennis courts, sand volleyball courts, play structures and walking paths. There is more we can do, but we'll just continue moving forward with the best experience we can offer.
Thank you. Next question. So several have several of you have listed infrastructure as an area of attention in your platform or campaign websites. For the community watching this, what exactly do you want to improve when it comes to the city's infrastructure? Where are the challenges and opportunities? Nancy Ross, you're up first.
Thank you. As we're on the brink of introducing the final twenty forty Cathedral City Goal Setting Plan, you will have the opportunity to see many new and many continuing projects. Some are long time out like the I-ten DeVal Interstate Interchange and others are ongoing like maintaining our roads. In addition to these, I'm interested in sidewalks in our neighborhood so as to not have to walk into the streets. Making sure every home is on the city sewer and not on septic systems. Having an audit of our neighborhood lighting to see areas for improvement and looking to make sure we offer a high speed fiber data infrastructure to encourage industries with living wage jobs to look at Cathedral City for their next expansions. Businesses like data centers or corporations like Google, Amazon, and others who have obligated to go solar and could use the sun power we have to offer here. But on top of physical infrastructure, I wanted to speak about social infrastructure too. That includes quality medical help right here in Cathedral City. Increased educational opportunities for our kids graduating from high school. Continuing our assessment of affordable housing to make sure we still have an ample supply and that we offer transportation to all citizens of our city, like those who don't have cars, but also those who suffer handicaps or those who wish to conserve energy. There is so much to be proud of in Cathedral City, but to maintain that pride, we must be constantly assessing where we can grow, where we can learn, and where we can teach. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alan Carvalho?
Hello, thank you. First of all, the entertainment district downtown is going to really be an economic boom and we've been waiting for it. When we've had events downtown, the interaction with the fire, police, and EMTs interacting with families and young people shows and reflects how tremendous our connection is with our first responders. There is no faking the level of intimacy and and concern that these men and women have for our community. Whether it's the Halloween event that we have downtown where the police and fire vehicles are engaged with young people so they have they understand respect for the people that are trying to keep them safe. The city itself, although the city is on ongoing deferred maintenance issues addressing all the time because that's the nature of a city. Major projects such as the Ophelia Bringuis Bridge got funded from grants during the previous administration. It is an ongoing construction site projected to be completed by the end of twenty twenty-one. Other ongoing issues like road surfacing, road repairs, traffic light synchronization, building more parks, some dog parks, and eventually a much needed community center is what takes an activist progressive council to apply for state, county, and federal grants funding. I plan on being that voice to address applying for every grant available. This is not the duty of the staff, but council has to make the connections and elevate the city's visibility through regular engagements, even if by Zoom meetings alone for now. Greg Pettish, our beloved former mayor, went out of his way and was sometimes demonized on council because sometimes he wasn't present. He was busy being in DC and in Sacramento getting one hundred million dollars in economic development for infrastructure. And as a result, that brought in two hundred million dollars in further economic development. That is what a council does and that is leaving a legacy for future generations and future council members. We need to spend more time creating legacies for the future. Planting seeds where we may not feel the shade of those trees, but it's important to have that vision. And it's important to keep having a great relationship with our city, with the police and the fire and the EMTs and the incredible staff that we're blessed with. So I say the city's in great shape. We've got to keep positive because we all need to be cheerleaders for the positive energy that happens in our city and we, the city, mean we, the people. Thank you.
Thank you. JR Corrales?
Yes, city infrastructure is a great talking point for every candidate that is looking to get elected, but what does it really mean? The reason why I got into city politics to begin with was because I had a passion for my neighborhood. District two is in dear need of roads to be fixed and taken care of first. And how do we do that is by setting a set budget of our own city budget to make sure that we are able to take care of our own city first. Our own streets first before we can focus on anything other than that. That's the passion and the reason why I care about this city and why I decided to run. I am on the I was on the forefront of getting our beautiful park being built, Alcatel Park, by having walking the streets to get over a hundred signatures to ensure that we were one of the top five cities selected to receive a grant for our park. Now with how are we going to do that? Our desert recreation centers offer a great opportunity for us to do that in the sense that by contracting them, they will take care of our city parks and maintenance, which will allow us to have a little bit bigger budget to take care of our streets and our sidewalks. It's important that we focus within ourselves and I want to focus on our district specifically to begin with to show love and bring a little bit more attention to our city needs before we can get to a home. It's a great start by taking care of our residents and making sure that our kids are able to walk home safely and our citizens have somewhere to walk without the fear of tripping, falling, or anything else happening to them because our our streets are not paved correctly. It's important that we set a specific budget from our city to ensure that our infrastructure goes a long way. Thank you.
Thank you. Rita Lamb?
Great, thank you. And I, you know, I love that phrase to improve and enhance the quality of life for our residents and businesses because that was that's what infrastructure projects are about. The first project and most obvious project that's been mentioned many times tonight and for anyone who travels through Cathedral City is the Ophelia Bringuis Memorial Bridge at Cathedral Canyon. And this is just just for those listening, these projects take a long time. It's a project that's been in the works for all. I was on the Public Arts Commission from two thousand six to two thousand eleven and details for that project came before the Public Arts Commission then. So that's how long it takes for these projects to come to fruition. The start of the project was delayed just last year as a result of the Valentine's Flood two thousand nineteen. The floodwaters coursed through the Whitewater Channel and closed Cathedral Canyon for several days until the floodwater subsided and repairs could be made. Those temporary measures delayed the project, but it's now underway and will permanently make Cathedral Canyon accessible for residents, business owners, and patrons. A lot of those businesses on Perez Road really felt the aftermath of that, the shutdown. Council recently approved three projects through the Active Transportation Program and Nancy had mentioned that about trailheads and walking paths. The bulk of that funding is available through SEVAG. These projects include striping of a portion of Dyna Shore for bike lanes and connecting the Seabee Link to Date Palm and across the Date Palm Bridge Overpass and new traffic signals. The upgraded access to the new seven eleven on Date Palm and Ramon is not only safe, but it's beautiful. That's a corner that is now it's it's, you know, gorgeous. And the repair of the streets and thoroughfares through Whispering Palms area and along Ortega and Corral. With the balance of SB two funding, planning grant funds, Public Works was able to purchase two engineering plan review tables and support equipment to help streamline the housing review process. So you know, infrastructure, those projects take a while and we're always advocating and looking for grants to make funding available for our projects. So thank you.
Thank you. We will allow all of you two minutes for a closing statement. First up, Rita Lamb?
Okay, am I on?
You were on.
Good, thank you so much. You know, I first of all, I want to think, as everybody expressed at the beginning, I was a little nervous, so I didn't I didn't say it as fervently as I want to say it now. Thank you so much for the chamber for hosting this event. It's a wonderful forum and I really appreciate I've listened to all of the the folks running for office over La Quinta and Palm Desert and Coachella and all of them. So I've got to learn more about the communities and it's wonderful. And I also want to thank all of you. You know, the the willingness and the courage to step up to the plate and you know, put your put yourself on the line in service to the people is is admirable. So I applaud you all for doing that. And certainly there's been never been a better time for civic engagement than right now. And and as I was listening to all the different people vying for the different spots in their respective cities. You know, it was it was interesting to hear about the character of this specific city and the culture that has developed around it. And I was, you know, I was just in awe of that. I have lived in the Coachella Valley for forty years. I have lived in two different two cities and I've lived in Cathedral City for the last twenty. But I have worked in six, six of the municipalities. My last my last position as a public school principal was at Palmview Elementary. A shout out to Steve Hernandez. They're doing some great things there. They're rebuilding that school. And I can say that I I hope that we don't have another emergency. You know, I hope we don't have another pandemic, another crisis, but my guess is that that's not true. I think we're probably going to have another. And I would like to think that the nine municipalities when a situation like this arises, that we work in accord with a coordinated effort, that we take bold action and that we take swift action because our residents across the valley deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Ross? Two minutes for your closing statement.
Okay, I don't want to follow Rita anymore. She says all my best lines. Sorry, I'm just kidding. Thanks again to the Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce for hosting this forum. These are tough times in our country and I, like Rita said, I also appreciate the candidates who are willing, as I am, to serve during a global pandemic. This is a full time, boots on the ground job without COVID. And the decisions that will be made over the next year will shape our future for some time. We may be running for a district position, but of course, as Rita said, if elected, we will not only serve our district and not only even our city, but we will be linked to our entire valley. And with that link, we are only as strong as our weakest link. And we must be ready to help in all ways as listeners, doers, thinkers, and helpers. The good news is we have a great city with dedicated employees and I'm pleased that I've been able to get to know the staff and have always enjoyed working with them. I have a passion for our future and it includes you. I hope you will join me. I'm asking for your vote. Be sure to check out my website at Nancy for Cathedral City. And thank you to everyone who tuned in to watch this forum this evening. It really does matter. Our city really does matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Carvalho?
Yes, hello. First of all, thank you for everyone is in the involvement of this forum. I want to thank Rita, Nancy, and JR. This is how respect is gained and earned when we don't shout at each other. I would like to elect Rebecca Rizzo as our next moderator for the presidential debate. Because see how it's how well this can be done with respect. We take our time. We're not shouting over each other. So I want to say thank you, everyone. And it does take energy and passion for our city to run. So thank you fellow candidates for pushing forward and stepping up. Again, Joshua, Rebecca, Diana, thank you for putting this together. My passion for my city will never wane. I moved here never assuming that my husband would run for city council and be on council for four years. I never dreamed that being with him for forty-eight years that I would even consider during retirement to to run for office. But my passion kept getting stronger after I left the chair of the public arts and after I volunteer for every event that I can possibly imagine and encourage them to go on. The bed race was something that we we did collaboratively because Shelley and I went to the the Key West for vacation and found them doing bed races with hospital beds. How bizarre was that? But you bring an idea to the city and it flourishes. So this is what we're about. Our city is flourishing and thank you for all those that have taken the time to take to listen to what we have to say. And please continue to be involved in our city. Please contribute, whether you agree or disagree with us. Your voice is important and we thank you for the opportunity. And please, I've been taking my time visiting people in the north quadrant of my district and the families there are thrilled to have me visiting. They want to be engaged in the community. It's up to us to go to the neighborhoods and have block parties and have engagements with our neighbors. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for letting me speak and thanks again, everybody for being part of this forum.
Thank you. JR Corrales, you're up next. Two minutes.
Once again, thank you, Diana. Thank you, everyone involved in the chambers for providing this platform during these tough times. Once again, I strongly believe that our council needs diversity and representation as much as our beautiful city is. I feel as a young person who grew up here, it is time for us to set up our future for our beautiful city. It's at a pivotal point. It's time for someone who has grown up here to actually speak up and be a part of the city council. It'll be the first time ever if it happens. I want to thank everyone for the time. Nancy, thank you for being here. Alan, thank you for being here. Rita, thank you for all being here. At the end of the day, I just want to thank every single one of you because it takes a lot to honestly run. And I just want to say that I want to run a council and a and a and a campaign strictly based on what I feel like can accomplish. Much respect to every single one of my candidates. I look forward to working with you in the future regardless of the outcome because at the end of the day, we all have a great passion for our city. I can only speak up for myself when I say as a lifelong resident of this beautiful city, I want to see it continue to flourish and to become the gem that it truly is. I feel our city is moving forward in a great direction and it's time to keep that steam going on that train. I want to be a part of it and I feel that I am the best candidate for that position. I want to take a quick minute just real quick in Spanish to be able to tell all of our non English speaking residents how important it is to go out and vote. Primeramente gracias a ustedes por venir a visitarnos ahora. Es muy importante que vayan a votar. Mi nombre es JR Corrales y estoy corriendo para city council en el distrito número dos. Si tienen cualquier pregunta, me pueden contactar por Facebook or por email and jrcorralescc@gmail.com. Gracias.
Thank you. Thank you all for your comments and willingness to spend time with us tonight to share your positions. A reminder that tonight's event will be available for replay on NBC Palm NBC Palm Springs dot com as soon as it's posted. Once again, thank you for our candidates and audience and a reminder from the Cathedral City Chamber of Commerce to please everyone vote. Good night.